We call this meeting to order, and we're going to ask for the invocation by the Reverend Rene Castello from the Church of the Apost- Holy Apostle. If you could please come forward.
God our Creator, we acknowledge your presence in our lives. We thank you for giving us this day and the many blessings and opportunities you have bestowed on us in your great wisdom and providence. We thank you for the people we have met today, our family, friends, future friends. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for our community and all who serve it, for those who teach and those who protect, for those who clean and those who repair, for those who work in parks and those who work on roads, for those who plan and those who make those plans happen, for those who govern and those who elect, for those whose lives portray the best of what it means to be a citizen of our beloved city, Commonwealth and nation. We thank you for our community and we pray for all in our community who are burdened, for those who are hungry, unemployed, homeless or uninsured, for all who are physically or mentally ill, for all in our community who live in the shadow of violence. We ask you for the courage to do what we can for the benefit of all. As this formal meeting begins this evening, we pray for all of us here. Give each one clarity of mind, integrity, due diligence, compassion and a sense of humor. Give each one an open heart. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words. In all things, may they always strive to serve our community and in doing so, serve you, our Maker. All this we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get going.
Free off the stand, please. Today, 12 years ago, 12 years ago today to be exact, we lost 32 special members of our community from Virginia Tech Hokeys. But gummin's all fit to still these 32 lives. Today, we stand here in a moment of silence to remember them, to remember that day and to vow to never forget. Thank you, Mayor, for this moment of silence. Vary your heads, please.
Amen. Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Rouse, for those words and our heartfelt condolences, not only for, you know, your fellow classmates, but the families and our nation that do that. And thank you so much kindly for bringing this forward. Okay. At this point, can we have the cer- roll call?
All present excluding Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott.
Okay. We have a motion for the clar- clarification of the closed session, certification of the closed session?
So vote.
Second.
Okay. Vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, you have certifi- certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay. At this point, you know, with the audience's indulgence, we're going to just hold back the public comment section on the candidates for the council vacancy until after the reading of the consent agenda.
Minutes?
Yes.
Minutes. No minutes.
No minutes. Okay. First, Madam Clerk, a public hearing on the non-exclusive franchise use for Xnet Systems, Virginia LLC.
No speaker, sir.
Okay. At that point, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Vice Mayor to read the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, a move for approval on the consent agenda of the following items. Under J, ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, resolution to direct the city attorney to file a petition for writ of special election regarding the Rose Hall District vacancy. Item J2, resolution request of the Virginia Department of Transportation accept A, additional streets for urban maintenance payments, B, corrections and deletions to the road inventory. J3, ordinance to donate promotional items for Historic Preservation Month to Preservation Virginia regarding raising awareness for ongoing preservation needs at Cape Henry Lighthouse. J4, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned property for up to five years at the Virginia Beach Maritime Museum Incorporated at 24th Street and Atlantic Avenue regarding Old Coast Guard Building. J5, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into portions of city rights play known as Commerce Street and Central Park Avenue regarding elevated patios. J6, ordinance to accept and appropriate A, $7,000 from VB Home Now Incorporated to the FY 1819 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Budget regarding assisting families to obtain and keep housing. Item 6B, $375,912 from Virginia Department of Emergency Management regarding mobilization of Virginia Task Force Two FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Team for Hurricane Florence. Item J7, ordinance to appropriate $171,705 to the FY 1819 Fire Department Operating Budget Ray Purchase of Replacement Protective Apparel and Breathing Apparatus Equipment.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Item K2, Princess Anne Hotel LLC in City of Virginia Beach for conditional change of zoning from B2 commercial and business, community business to conditional B4 mixed use at the northeast corner of Princess Anne Road and Community College Place regarding construction of a hotel in the Centerville District. Item K3, Emmanuel Protestant Episcopal Church for modification of conditions regarding Childcare Education Center within religious use at 5181 Singleton Way in the Kempsville District. Item K4, North Landing Beach RV Resort and Cottage's Virginia Beach LLC for modification of conditions regarding construct two community peers at 161 Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District. Item K5, BMW Tattooing LLC and Capital Finance Incorporated for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 172 South Plaza Trail in the Beach District. Item K6, Norfolk, Virginia Beach Airport Incorporated for conditional use permit regarding bulk storage yard at the vacant parcel on the west side of Miller Store Road in the Bayside District. Item K7, BNL Investment Group LLC for conditional use permit regarding motor vehicle sales at 202 South Newtown Road in the Kempsville District. Item K8, Pleasure House Brewing LLC and Weathersby Property for conditional use permits, Ray Craft Brewery and Open Air Market at 2032 Pleasure House Road in the Bayside District. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
Okay. We're now going to go to the public comment. The public is invited to participate in this process of filling a much-needed vacancy right now in the Beach District. And we ask as you come forward that, you know, we want Virginia Beach to be a city of civility and mutual respect, and we just hope that your words will be listened to, and we will definitely take into consideration your thoughts, and we welcome you to the process. But please, I just ask for courtesy and effective communication. And at this point, can we bring, you know, the first person forward?
Sure. The first speaker is Michael Summers, and after Mr. Summers will be Steve Faschetti.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, thank you for the opportunity to make a few brief comments on behalf of Guy Tower, one of the applicants for the vacant Beach District City Council seat. I've known and worked with Guy since 2013. No doubt, you know that Guy is trained as an attorney, skilled as a mediator and educator, has a long history of service to our city and Commonwealth, and knowledgeable about many of the challenges facing this council. I believe that he would be an asset to the city and council for this interim period. I think Guy brings a wealth of talent from his legal career that would serve the citizens of the city. Guy cares about our city and would be committed to helping to shape its future during this interim service period. While Guy has been clear that he does not intend to run for the seat in November, you still have the opportunity to benefit from his wisdom and passion for this wonderful city of Virginia Beach, which we all proudly call home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Faschetti. And then the next speaker will be Glenn Carwell.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it. Good evening. My name is Steve Faschetti. I live at 3810 Atlantic Avenue here in Virginia Beach. Mayor Dyer, council members, I'm here to advocate for the candidacy of Guy Tower as well. My wife and I have lived at Virginia House, co-op residence on Atlantic Avenue, for nearly five years, and for most of that time, Guy and his wife Winship were neighbors of ours, and we've become friends. As previous speaker mentioned, and as his resume attests, Guy has great depth and breadth of professional skills and talents, but I'm here to endorse him based on those softer skills that aren't always as obvious on a resume or professional documentation. As president of the Virginia House Co-op HOA for the past several years, I've learned quite a bit about trying to build consensus among a diverse population that often has different agendas or even different value sets, something that you folks probably never have to deal with here in city government. Guy has been a trusted resource in providing advice over the years in managing issues that often could be very divisive for our residents. I found him to be a very deliberate, very rational decision-maker. I find that he leaves emotions in check, except when it comes to UVA basketball. He has great instincts when it comes to building collaborative environments to explore issues and to reach decisions as a team. Those instincts, combined with his native intelligence, with his persistence, with his attention to detail, I think make him an outstanding candidate to join you on the council here. So I hope you take this opportunity to allow Guy to join you and work with you for all of the citizens of Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Glenn Carwell, and then Stephen Strickler.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Dyer, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Glenn Carwell, and I'm here to endorse my friend Guy Tower for a position, an interim position on city council. Guy has an extraordinary resume. He worked for Kaufman &amp; Canoles for 21 years. It's the largest law firm in the area with over 100 attorneys. Guy was the managing partner of this firm, dealing with all of the intricacies of complex business, multimillion-dollar budget and personnel issues. He was involved with many mergers and acquisitions, complex financial endeavors. Guy's a homeowner now in Virginia Beach on 43rd Street with he and his wife. Guy also was the executive director of the Virginia State Bar Association for six years, dealing with the legislature on many diverse issues, and learned a lot about the intricacies of the committees in the Virginia General Assembly, how to pass legislation and how legislation sometimes disappears. When Guy retired from being attorney, he became involved in mediation. He wrote courses in mediation, which were given at the William &amp; Mary Law School and Old Dominion at the MBA program. He's a skilled mediator, an attempt to solve problems without litigation. I think Guy would be an outstanding asset to this council due to his executive experience, legal experience and his personality. So highly recommend him. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for coming.
Stephen Strickler, and after Mr. Strickler will be Vince Mastrocco.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer and members of council, my wife Linda and I are here, along with many of our friends, to support Guy Tower for the council vacancy representing the Beach District. Linda and I have been residents of the Beach District for over 40 years, and we have known Guy for over 30 years. He is, without doubt, the most civic-minded person I know. His knowledge of state and local issues frankly is encyclopedic. He knows a lot about state and local government, but I think his most important asset to serve this council would be his experience as a mediator. Guy knows how to reach a consensus and to compromise on the difficult issues that we face council in now and in the future. I urge you to support his candidacy for the vacancy in Beach District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Vince Mastrocco. And after Mr. Mastrocco will be Diana Howard.
Welcome, Vince.
Thanks. Mayor Dyer, council, I'm Vince Mastrocco. I live at 8404 Oceanfront Avenue in Virginia Beach. Well, I'm one of those people here also to support Guy Tower. I think Guy, you will find, is the most thoughtful and measured person I know, but he always has a calming influence when he takes on any chore. Guy, as you've heard before, has had a wide array of experiences. As you've heard again, he's been a mediator, has helped resolve complex situations, always with the compassion in mind. He joined our law firm in 1981, which is now Kaufman &amp; Canoles, and within a few years he became the managing member of the firm and the CEO. That's 30-some years. We've only had three managing partners, managing members, so it was quite important for us to select someone who we thought could lead us. And during the time there, his guidance was invaluable as the firm grew in numbers and reputation. You've also heard that he served for six years as the executive director of the Virginia Bar Association. In that role, he provided guidance to judges, government officials and legislators in many matters, but mostly matters in ethics. When judges had issues of ethics, they really called on Guy to help resolve that. As you've also heard before, he has an ability to analyze complex situations, but to be pragmatic about the solutions. Now, as this council considers public-private partnerships, he would be an invaluable person to have because Guy can analyze a structure which would appropriately align the risk of both the private and the public sector in order to reach a fair and equitable solution for the resolution, because public-private partnerships are, can be pretty provocative when you consider them, and he would be a great asset to that. We've heard before that one of his strengths is building bridges, and indeed, he does build great bridges and maintain equitable, equitable solutions for people who could talk to him about issues. Resident of 40 years, if selected by the council, you've heard that in November he will not run for office, so please give him your careful consideration. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Diana Howard. And after Ms. Howard will be Joanna Hoffheimer.
Hey, Diana, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you doing today? Well, I'd like to say I was stunned when I seen the list. I'll start with the most unacceptable at the bottom, John Earn, who lost the election by over 63% of the voters. Putting him back on would be like an affront to everybody who voted. Megan Kenneth, who's training with the Chamber of Commerce, an organization that advocates for more taxpayer subsidies. She also is not ruling out running for the election in November, so appointing her to the seat would be giving her an advantage as an incumbent. Lee Davenport, sister to Ben Davenport. I imagine there'd be a conflict of interest, being that he has business interest in the vibe district. Ms. Strayhorn, former councilwoman on the Virginia Beach Vision. They supported Light Rail and every project down at the oceanfront, which leaves Guy Tower, who's retired lawyer with, used to be with Kaufman &amp; Canole, and had many dealings with the city. So I'm wondering, you wanted to invite us to the table, but you went behind closed doors and picked five candidates out of, what, 14 that you thought would be good candidates? I don't know what your qualifications were that you were looking for to get on there, but I would like to know who that applied for the position that you didn't think was well-suited enough to sit on the diocese with you. I mean, is this open and transparent when we don't even know who else applied? I mean, it seems if you're going to have public engagement and ask us to the table, you could at least give us that information. So that's all I have to say. I mean, check off that box, public engagement.
Joanna Hoffheimer. And after Ms. Hoffheimer will be Nancy Parker.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Hoffheimer, and I live on 64th Street. My family, my husband and I have had a house in Virginia Beach since 1980, but this is the first time I have ever spoken before city council. I'm here to support Guy Tower. I've had a number of lucky volunteer jobs in Virginia Beach, beginning with mentoring at Sea-Tac Elementary, and I was the founding president of Buy Fresh Buy Local Hampton Roads, served on the boards of the Virginia Beach Library Foundation, and also on the board of Old Beach Farmers Market, and now I am a very enthusiastic master gardener volunteer. I know that you're all familiar with Guy Tower's qualifications, and if you had not memorized his resume, you've certainly heard enough already, so I'm not going to do that. But I would like to highlight what I think makes Guy really stand out. I would emphasize his analytical skills. He sees the big picture. He gets the scope and the vision, but he also has a real gift for understanding the details. He sees the nuances. He understands repercussions. He's had a long and varied career honing these skills. Guy Tower has a profound interest in governance, and he would be able to jump in with understanding and commitment, and he understands how to read a budget. With all of this, Guy is confident but not arrogant. He's compassionate but not soft, and he's deeply committed, but as you know, not ambitious for elected office. I know that you will recognize that these are all rare and valuable traits, and I commend his candidacy to you. I hope you will select him. I think that he would serve our citizens with distinction and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nancy Parker. And after Ms. Parker will be Conrad Shesventer.
Hi, Nancy. How you doing?
Mayor Dyer, members of city council, my name is Nancy Parker. I live at 23rd Street in the Beach Borough. The council finds itself in a delicate and unenviable position of filling the Beach Borough seat for the next eight months. As you contemplate this decision, I respectfully and highly recommend Guy Tower. Guy is a very serious and thoughtful community leader who has collaborated with others on state, regional and local levels. Since the announcement of this vacancy, Guy has spent countless hours adding to his depth of knowledge by attending various meetings, reaching out to community leaders and delving into the budget to prepare himself to be an informed and contributing member when he should take the seat if he's so chosen. Guy Tower comes with a very prestigious legal background, which includes mediation. I've had the opportunity of working with Guy on the library board as well as the Library Foundation, and know of his superb reputation as he has served on various community and regional boards. His opinions are highly respected and balanced. Guy is capable of representing all aspects of the Beach Borough, which, as you know, is a very diverse and multi-layered part of the city. In the next eight months, there will be several critical issues facing the council. Guy will bring an unbiased and global community processing perspective for the benefit of both the Beach Borough as well as the city as a whole. Guy Tower would be an asset and an excellent choice as the interim Beach Borough council member. And would all those who are here to support Guy, would they please stand? And we can only all hope that we had this many friends who would get up and speak for us when it came for something special like this, with such depth and such knowledge and such caring for this gentleman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Conrad Shesventer and Jay Jerry.
Virginia Beach City Council, this is Conrad, your voice for Virginia Independent Politics. Today, you should consider appointing Megan Kenneth to the Beach District seat. Individuals like John Earn, Guy Tower and the esteemed Louisa Strayhorn are well-accomplished. They're pillars of our community. But I have faith in our youth, and this 32-year-old should know. That left Megan Kenneth and Leah Davenport, and as a political science bachelor's holder, I'd usually consider the lawyer Davenport. Her qualifications are strong. However, Megan Kenneth studied in leadership at Lead Hampton Roads. She's prolific in the arts, accounting, directing, sales and volunteering with the underserved children of Hampton Roads. I have the impression she will not leave the Beach underserved. I'd like to thank the man I voted for, David Nigard, for serving. I'd like to thank John Coker for considering it a second time. Those two good men are friends, but we're onwards now, and I'd consider Megan Kenneth for this seat. Thank you all.
Thank you, Conrad.
Jay Jerry. And after Mr. Jerry will be Tammy Mullins Rice.
Mayor Dyer.
Welcome.
Members of council. I'm Jay Gory. I have lived in Virginia Beach since 1965, and as, like one of the other speakers, I live in the Virginia House now at 3810 Atlantic Avenue. Lived there with Guy and Winship for several years, but have known them for many, many years. We've been personal friends. Guy and I are both retired attorneys, so we go back a long way together. I feel like I know Guy very well. In seeking the seat, I think you have an extremely impressive resume of Guy's in front of you, and you have Guy's letter to Mayor Dyer. I won't belabor that. I think the other speakers have covered much of it. I will say something that I, that's not contained in the resume about Guy that I think is important from my experience and my knowledge of him. Guy is a problem solver. He is a person, you know, we all, I think, in our business and professional relationships find that we rely on certain people. We look for their opinions. We're trying to solve a problem, and Guy happens to be one of those people whose opinions we seek. He listens. He doesn't talk off the cuff. He's knowledgeable. He studies, and he's considerate of other people's opinions. He works to build a consensus, and I think that something like that in Guy's makeup would be really valuable for the city of Virginia Beach. I think he brings to the city a great intellect and a lot of wisdom, and I hope that you'll see fit to put him in that chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Tammy Mullins Rice. And then the next speaker will be Morris Fine.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, city council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. While I understand the legalities that have brought us to this point, I was deeply disturbed to see John Earn on the short list of candidates for appointment to the Beach seat. As a citizen of Virginia Beach and a resident of Beach District, under no circumstances do I wish to see Mr. Earn appointed to that seat, regardless of how temporary it may be. There's a reason he wasn't reelected, because he didn't represent all the people who live in the Beach District. Do you know that in a short time, Dave Nag- David Nigard was our councilman, that he visited Sea-Tac more times than Mr. Earn in the entire 12 years that he held the seat? Now, for the record, that was not hard to do, because he only needed to attend one meeting to tie and two to exceed. We're not talking of a high bar, but we should be. Shouldn't we expect our representative to be sensitive to the needs of the people in the community he and she represents? Go to bat- Go to bat for them even if they're not successful? Show support? Attend community events and functions? Is that asking too much? Mr. Earn attended one Sea-Tac Community Civic League meeting, probably because Mayor Cecil was there and he wanted to show or be supportive to the mayor. Even, and even then, he refused to help us with the barrier issue in front of Rehoboth Baptist Church and St. Stephen's Church of God in Christ. That barrier correction was made possible with the assistance of John Moss and Brad Martin, who continued to advocate for us even after he lost his seat, his at-large seat. And Dave Hansen. As a citizen, I did my duty and cast my vote. Please do not act as if my vote did not matter and reappoint John Earn. If you're not big business at the Beach, you don't exist to him. And in Sea-Tac, we are sick and tired of being disregarded. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morris Fine. And after Mr. Fine is Ray Russell.
Good evening Morris, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, sir, and City Council members. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Morris Fine. I practice law. I'm unaccustomed to speak in front of a group like this for a candidate. Mostly it's done at my dinner table. And I have a tougher candidate to convince, tougher person to convince than this group. And that's my wife. By my endorsement of Guy Tower today, I don't diminish the abilities and intelligence and devotion of the other candidates. But I do have a very high regard for Guy. I've served with him as a lawyer over the years. I know him well as a volunteer. He is on the Virginia Beach Library Board Foundation with me over the years. And in every respect, he has always been very thorough and detail-oriented. He is a neutral. And I would think that that would be an asset that you would want to have for this short period of time. He's, in the parlance of today, he's going to be one and out. And so when the time comes in November for him to go, he's going to be gone. And I suggest to you that that's a very good asset that you would have in him for that short period of time. Because he is, as Jay Gory said, he's a problem solver. He is what I call the father of mediation in this area. He was instrumental in setting up lawyers to mediate cases. He was the person that started it and was instrumental in getting that underway, which is a very good thing for the legal profession as well as the citizens in general. He has intelligence. He has devotion. He has independence and integrity. And those are characteristics that I know all of you have. And I suggest that Guy Tower should be your nominee.
Thank you very much, sir.
Ray Russell. And after Mr. Russell will be Amelia Ross Hammond.
Good evening, sir.
Hey Mayor, Councilmember. I just want to sort of pair it with Diane Howard said. I don't think this process is being understood by the citizens of Virginia Beach. You have an electoral process. We put somebody on council. And all of a sudden, we have several court hearings. And he's dismissed. And then we have a secretive process where people are sort of made candidates. And the normal citizen don't understand the political, the election, or the judicial process. But they understand as they vote for somebody and they get on council. Optically, what we've done here doesn't look very good. So I don't think anybody that ran for this seat should be considered for the seat. They can run in November, that's fine. But for this seat, no. That's my, and I think just to be fair to the citizens of Virginia Beach, you've got to constantly keep that in mind when you're talking about a process like this. To the citizens, it's not very open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Amelia Ross Hammond. And after Ms. Ross Hammond will be Andrew Jackson.
And welcome Amelia. And on behalf of myself and the City Council in the city of Virginia Beach, our condolences on the loss of your mom. You were devoted to her. And she was a remarkable, wonderful woman. And her legacy continues on with you.
Thank you so much for your condolences and kind words of comfort. As you see, I've come out today because this to me is also important. I'm here to endorse Guy Tower. I got to meet him about, right after he had retired as Executive Director for the Virginia Bar Association. To me, he has a special gift. And that public engagement, working with people, integrity, meant a lot to me. He has an excellent resume. And not only that, he will impact what we are trying to do. As you know, there's still the sea level. There's still the storm. There's still a storm sight. And he is a person that's willing to mediate and work with others. How I got to know him even more, he goes beyond just the Beach District. I came and worked with you all for getting the Virginia Beach, the African-American Cultural Center. And one day, we were talking. And he says, "Well, this sounds great. I would like to be a chartered member." That is the type of man he is. He came out and he went beyond that. He says, "What else are you working with?" I said, "Well, I need to go through the process where at least we become a nonprofit and so forth." Guy Tower called me aside and said, "You know, I work with the Kaufman and Kinnos. I will see if they can help you through this process." And he certainly did. He got Louis Webb, he's got others. And today, we are a nonprofit and so forth. All, all gratis. To me, that speaks volumes of a man who reminds me of one African proverb where they say, "Speak softly, but carry a big stick, and you will go far." And today, we're here, the whole group of us to support him. So some of this part that I'm bringing to the table, you haven't heard. But I think he will serve amply. He's also able to go across generation. Because having written the curriculum for over at William &amp; Mary, adjunct faculty, at ODU, that means he's worked with young people. And so this is the new generation that's coming up. And we need someone that can step in that spot. So I endorse him. And I hope you will seriously consider endorsing and bringing forth Guy Tower for that short time. It will be a great asset. And last thing, you will get two firsts. Because his wife is a retired judge from a juvenile relationship. That's record. Thank you so much for your time. And thank you again for your condolences.
Thank you and again, best wishes.
Andrew Jackson.
Andrew, welcome.
I'll pass around. Thank you, sir.
I have a letter here from the Ministers Conference. I'm reading for you. And I will read that. And I gave copies so you would all have a copy of it. And since my eyes are not as young as they used to be. Okay, now, there is something right in there. The Virginia Beach City Council members reference the vacant seat appointee. Dear sirs and madams, after careful consideration of his credentials, the Virginia Beach Interdenominational Ministers Conference is supporting Mr. Guy Tower for the vacant seat on council. His legal mediation and business expertise brings a unique talent and perspective to the council. We trust you can see the benefits of having someone presently non-affiliated with city business, yet as qualified as anyone among the candidates and seated council persons. We feel that Mr. Tower's appointment to the seat ensures Virginia Beach continues to move toward the inclusive community we are all praying it to be. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to call me at my number below. And was signed by Dr. James Allen, who's the President, Virginia Beach Interdenominational Ministers Conference. Having said that, I also, as the Chair of the African-American Leadership Forum, concur with that endorsement. But I also will say to you, and I think I sent you a letter sometime earlier. There was a president that said, fourscore, seven years ago, "Our fathers brought forth upon this continent a new nation, conceived of liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal." Nowhere in there or in the Constitution have I seen anything about preference. And what I saw with this list was preference. What I saw with this list is an insult. An insult to all of those that came to the polls and voted. And we voted a person on or off. And that should be respected. No way should a person that is voted off be added to a list for appointment. That's wrong. I will tell you, you see that? I put my life on the line for a constitution, for democracy, and many others. And I will tell you, I know some that did not make it back. They did not do that for a government that was for preference. They did it for a government of, by, and for the people. When I put my heart, my hand on my heart and look at that flag, it's not just for that piece of material. It's for what it represents. Fairness and equality. Let's make this happen. Let's not insult the voters of this city by even putting the name on that list. I would ask you that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the speakers that have signed up, sir.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank everyone who participated today. You know, this is definitely a challenging time for the City Council and the people that live in Virginia Beach. The fact is that we could have just appointed somebody, but we elected not to do that. We elected to go through a more deliberative process. And no process is going to be perfect. But at least we solicited input and we solicited, you know, applications from people to participate. We went through a deliberate process to narrow the field to people that we were bringing forward to interview. And next week, we will be interviewing the five people right here in these chambers in public in a very transparent way. And then we will deliberate. And our council has the obligation to pick somebody that is, once again, this is only going to be a temporary position. But I think it's very important because there are 65,000 people that live in the Beach District that deserve representation. So once again, it's not a perfect process. But be assured, it's deliberative process. It's not a rush. We are thinking about the people of Virginia Beach. And ultimately, I'm confident that we're going to do the right thing for the right reason. I thank you all for your participation. Thank you. Okay. Okay, at this point, we will go to, we have one item for discussion in terms of planning. Okay, but at this, okay, I'll wait for the gallery to clear.
You don't want to speak? I don't, I don't have any. Andrew Jackson doesn't want to speak. He just told me. You gave me yours, but I, that's all. But nobody else. So he doesn't want to speak. He just motioned me off. Uh huh, but he just said he don't want to. So hold off Eddie, let's see what's happening.
We might not have any speakers.
But they want to discuss it, probably.
We'll just take one minute. Don't worry. Okay, at this point, I would like to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak after those have signed up to speak have spoken. The Chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk for the record. Okay, we have the planning item, which is K1 Clear Creek Holdings LLC.
Do we have speakers?
The only speaker that has signed up is Mr. Bordon.
Okay. I mean, do we just want to discuss it then? Because we've heard Mr. Bordon presented about four times.
Yeah. Do we have to make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Motion open for discussion.
Yeah, yeah, as for the motion, and then we can have the discussion.
Do you have a motion?
Motion for discussion.
And I don't need that.
We don't need that.
Just have the mayor deny you.
Approve or deny.
Well, I'd like for, since we have Sea-Tac Civic League members in the audience, I'd like for Mr. Planning Director Bobby Tahan to come up and explain, not too much in depth, but explaining the zoning, unconditional zoning issues with that property. So they understand exactly what.
At this point, you know, Mr. Tom, please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Tom. As we're aware of the Clear Creek Holdings application, a couple of the things that I want to make sure is brought to attention and forward is that the parcel is one parcel. It is not multiple parcels. It is, it has multiple zonings on it. The rear portion of the parcel, which does not have access to the street, is zone I1, which is industrial. And the front portion is zone R10, which is a single-family zoning. They have Navy restrictions that have been purchased on the property, which greatly limit any type of residential uses. The I1 property does have rights to have access through the R10 property. So it's important to note that the applicant could move forward with some type of design that would not have impact on the R10 parcel. But we believe that the design that they are proposing would be in keeping with the suburban focus area for Sea-Tac and as well as meeting the comprehensive plan needs in order to better buffer and to provide a lower-scale development than what could be built. They're proposing currently a one-story building, while the building that could be built, especially if it was adjacent to the residential, could be up to three stories at this point. So we believe that that is why staff provided a positive recommendation. And the Planning Commission as well concurred with the staff's position.
Okay. Any questions?
Sorry, Mayor.
Please, go right ahead.
This, just as a statement, this is not a process in which we want to do things here in Virginia Beach starting now or going forward. I believe the ball was dropped in not really engaging the community first and foremost. And not just here in the Beach District, but throughout our city whenever we want to talk about development. I think it's becoming upon the developers and those representatives to engage the public far before it comes before us before voting. You know, one thing here about the Sea-Tac community as well is that, as you heard just a while ago, a community has been underrepresented that hasn't had a voice for quite some time. And so when you have a development like this that comes before a council in the old manner of business as usual, that's no longer going to fly. It's not going to fly in the Beach District. It's not going to fly throughout our community, our city. So as for me, in knowing what this means for the Sea-Tac community as well, you know, I cannot support this. I understand the legal ramifications and what the zoning issue, what can and go on. But let this serve, my vote serves, as an example to the rest of the developers, whoever want to do business within Virginia Beach. We are open for business. I am for that. I'm for development. But if you do not take the crucial first step in engaging the public and making sure that the community understands exactly what's going to be developed in their community, I cannot support that.
Okay. Sabrina. Sabrina.
So, I concur with Councilmember Rouse for that particular reason. I have heard and I've listened to about the project, I've, you know, been diligent in reading the information, and the thing that stands out clear to me is what many of the residents have said. They've been underrepresented, they don't believe that a lot of the development in their, in their community is what they agree to, it's not becoming, you know, of a residential area that they are in agreement with. And, you know, I know we have a mixed community of, as was said before, industrial, commercial, residential, but, you know, the residents were there before any of this started. They have a clear stake and investment in their community, and they know what they want. And they're clearly saying that they don't want this investment in their community. And so, for that reason, I'd have to vote no as well.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fact of the matter is, is absent this, this application, you've got unrestricted I-1, or basically unrestricted I-1 in this neighborhood, that could be used, as the Planning Director said, for a number of other things that are, that are boxed out in this application in terms of automotive and repair and things like that. We have control over landscape, we have control over building height, we have control over a lot of things with this application. Mr. Bordon has repeatedly apologized for about the outreach portion of it, and I think, I think it's, I don't know how many more times we can say it, we understand that that was not done the way, the way that we wanted, and we heard also tonight that that's part of the process going forward, it's going to be a box on all these, these planning applications that indicates what kind of community outreach was done and how people were, were contacted on it. So, so I'm going to move for approval based on the fact that it's going to be the best thing that we can get here with this zoning, and knowing that it's going to protect the property owners around there more so than just leaving it unrestricted I-1, so I move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, yes, please, Aaron.
You know, Jim makes a great point as far as having certain conditions on the property, but, you know, I'm a principled, principled man, and actions aren't without consequences. And this is something, again, take the proper steps, go through the right channels, make sure you're engaged to public, so we don't have this issue going forward, and that's just not just for this particular property going forward, but it's throughout our city. It matters, the public engagement part, that's, that's important, whether you want to put any kind of development, and whether the community, buy-ins or not, their opinion, their voice matters, and it should count. And so, I want to say.
Barbara.
I'd like to ask the attorney, thank you Bobby, because I know in all the times I've been on the council, a lot of times I've had to vote for something that I really didn't like, but it was better than it could be. And I think that's where we're, we're facing. You know, we'd love to be able to go back and change the process, Mr. Bordon has said he wishes he could, but, I mean, that's not possible, so we have to stand where we are. Okay, if we do not approve this, as has been said, it can still be built as an industrial use, but without these conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, it's not a matter of whether you're going to get industrial use on this property or not, it's just that, are you going to get industrial use on this property as it is now without conditions, or will we be able to put conditions on it? Can you please describe what kind of buffering and what kind of conditions you're willing to put on the property?
Let me start with, and I'm going to answer your question, Mrs. Henley, but I want to start with, when this first came up before we had a public hearing, we did, I did engage with the community, and we have met with the community, and Councilwoman Wooton's characterization, I don't think is exactly correct. And there was, there, we had, had great dialogue, and I do not believe that the Civic League as a whole has taken a position that, you know, this is something that they don't want. They may, there are members that probably don't, I'm not going to, but the Civic League speak for a lot of different voices and a lot of different people. And I know, you know, Mr. Jackson and I have had a lot of conversations, and I think that that's a fair representation. The, because we agreed when asked that we would proffer away any use of the I-1 property, which is 80% of the property, unconditional, for a storage facility, we, a self-storage facility, the neighborhood doesn't want to see any more of those, it can be a three-story self-storage facility on that property as it is owned now, the 80% other than the frontage. Agreed there'd be no automobile service facilities of any kind, repair garage, light repair, any of that, none of that, it's all been with these proffers, proffered away. We have put additional landscaping well above what is required on a buy-right development, well above what's required on a buy-right development, all along the Burnneck Road frontage where the, where's a parking lot out front. We have additional buffer along the northern part of the property. The property adjacent to us is the same scenario, most of the property is zone unconditional I-1, except for the very front that's zone residential. There is a house about 100-plus feet north, which is the, really the only house on this section of Burnneck Road, all the way down to the, past the entrance to the water park. There's no other homes along the west side, they're on the east side of this four-lane divided highway. But we've added, all the landscaping staffs asked, we've kept the building as a small-scale one-story building, we've done raised-seam metal mansard, improved appearance, split block on the bottom of water table. All of what you see in the middle is interior, so what you're seeing is, on the outside is this, but you don't even see that for the bushes and the trees that will be planted. We've also agreed to put additional landscape buffering in the back of the property as well, more landscaping on the parking lot than would otherwise be required. We have more parking than is required onsite. These are small businesses, jobs, that's what this is about, is part of his job creation for small businesses in the city of Virginia Beach. So, the, and we proffered the signs, very attractive, low-style sign, not anything that's got any height to it. I think it's actually at, if I remember correctly, at six feet, or, you know, six or eight feet versus 12. And these are, again, these are small businesses in our city, employ, employ people, it's not a self-storage facility. And there are lots of uses the property can be made for. The only thing this is, which gives, this is why I said the very first meeting, you all get controlled by the fact that the city, back in the early 80s when the Navy came in, this is in APZ-2, it's in the highest noise zone, it's in the crash zone, the Navy, the city came in and split the zonings on these properties from, from this property forward, I mean, north, everything else that the property next door is the city animal care center is B-2, unrestricted commercial, but it's, you've got the animal care center. And everything south of this is, there's no residential zoning on the west side of Burnneck Road, there's no residential development, again, until you get past Ocean Breeze Water Park on the west side. There is on the east side, absolutely. But, you know, this is better landscape, better material, lower, lower impact than other industrial uses that are allowed on this property and would be allowed on the property next door. There's a storage yard on the property of a landscape company that's two properties north of this, really, until you get to beautiful street, Evergreen Terrace, on the west side, north of there, there's, it's residential, there's some interspersed industrial, but it's close together. Down here, there really isn't any residential other than across the street. And that's, you know, that's, and that doesn't excuse the fact that neither myself, my client, my clients actually have been to the Civic League many, many, many years ago, because they've owned this property for 58 years, it's never been developed. And they did go to the Civic League many years ago, because Mr. Minz knows Mr. Kurtz, for a different type of industrial development, but that's been about 35 years ago. They didn't develop it. So, that's, that's where we are, and it's going to, as is the, as is the rest of the property, in one form or fashion, is going, Mr. Sykes, not, not, it's not related to my partner, because he's a builder in town, he's got a piece that's already been approved, that's a zone I-1, that comes in here, that's, you know, approved, been approved for about five or six years for a industrial warehouse development, because it's zoned for it. And that's between us and Evergreen Terrace. This property, you see on here that's zone I-1, is all unconditional I-1. And so, it's, it is developable. And I, that's just, that's a part of the process of educating and explaining to folks, and the Navy has easements over the property that's zone residential. I believe every one, with the possible exception of the one, which is why we did extra landscaping, this piece next door, when in 82, I believe there was a, in researching ours, so I believe there was a house on there, the Navy map shows a house on there. So, this piece next door, which is one piece with split zoning, that's owned by a family that's got, I think, deep roots in the community, there, they could theoretically put a house on the, on the first part of that property, it's well, way larger than what would be needed, but with the back zoned industrial. But everything else, there's nothing else there that, that a house could be, be built on.
Okay, Aaron.
And I don't want to.
Then Sabrina, then Rosemary.
Labor the point, but I think, I really want to drive home this point, Mr. Bordon, and blame me, you don't have to apologize anymore.
I agree with you on that.
But it's important to understand, again, that, you just said, educating and explaining to people the zoning and condition of these lands, that's, that's the crucial aspect, you know, the ends doesn't justify the means. So, before that, you know, we even get to the point of whether it's I-1 or R-10, and whether those owners want to develop their land, the first step to do is engage the community and see, you know, is this something that would be, something that works with the community or something that'd be adverse to the community as well. And, you know, when you particularly look at C-TAC in the Beach District, there's a lot of development going around, and a lot of development that's going to happen in the future from the manufacturing of the battery plant to potentially, you know, the wave side, and there's Ocean Breeze, so there's a lot of traffic already on Burnneck, and a lot of development coming along. So, we have another development, I think, is even more becoming of, of developer or their representatives to engage the community. Because once again, once they buy in or not, you can say, hey, we engage that community, you know, and, and again, we have legal, you know, ramifications that, that are, holds us up against this, but if you engage the community as well, we wouldn't be having, we wouldn't be having this, this discussion.
Mr. Rouse.
But you don't have to apologize.
No, I, I just want to say, you're, you're.
I've homed that.
You are 100% correct. I appreciate everything that you have said tonight and pre, prior to tonight. You know, it is, and I've done this, you know, for my entire career, and it's not an excuse, we should have done it here. The mistake I made was the suburban focus area conversation, which was a long one, and that's the, basically, I misunderstood that it had been understood and settled. So, you know, I take that, and I have never, no aversion to communicating with the C-TAC community and to being helpful with the C-TAC community, and will continue to do so, and my client feels the exact same way.
Okay, Sabrina, Rosemary, then Barbara.
So, I just want to be clear, you know, I, I'm for economic development, and very oftentimes, I have voted to support development, and will continue to do so on a case-by-case basis. For this particular reason, as I stated before, what I heard from the community is, number one, it changes the nature of their neighborhood, and they are tired of companies coming in and doing that and not being told not to. They just see the continuous pattern, and so, it's like, where will, you know, to them, I hear what they're saying, where will it stop? You know, there's nothing specifically that I have against, you know, anyone or the owners or, or anything. I just hear the citizens saying, enough is enough, we don't want it here. And I've heard, I heard that last time this matter came up. So, I specific, I remember what I heard. And because of that, I mean, I have to stick by what I've said before, it's the pushback from the community, the continuous overdevelopment in that area, and the citizens said enough is enough. And so, I heard, I hear what they're saying, and for that reason, that's why I'm not in favor of it. But I'm not by any means against development and economic development. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear with that. That's what I heard, the voice of the citizens.
Okay, Rosemary.
Obviously, this has been a difficult one, that's why it's been referred so many times, and there's been tremendous concern from this council for the C-TAC neighborhood, which I'm your neighbor as well. I drive through C-TAC just about every single day. And one thing that we are committed to going forward, and we talked about this today, is for our planning staff and Mr. Tajan, who is a very compassionate planning director, has promised that he and his staff are going to come out and meet with the community, because this is not the only parcel that's got this split zoning. This is going to come up again. So, he is going, he has promised us that he's going to come out and meet with you as soon as he can arrange for a meeting, and to really, you know, work with you all and moving forward, we can deal with this in a better way. And we've also made a decision that going forward, that on all of our planning applications, we're going to have the box to check, have you been meeting with the community, have you had community engagement? And we're going to make that a priority going forward in our development, not just C-TAC, but everywhere, because we, we realized that that was really important, and this, sometimes a bright light has to come on to wake you up, and I think this was it. And like I said, this is very difficult, it's, my concern, which Ms. Henley said, if we don't move forward on this, what you're going to get is, by right, which they can do, is, is, could be a whole lot worse. So, how do you choose? Something that's not really wanted to something that's really less wanted or terrible. So, that's the position, you know, how do you want to take your medicine? And that's kind of where we are today.
Barbara.
Well, I just didn't get a chance to ask all my questions earlier, so.
Can I just say one quick thing? What Ms. Wilson said, I heard that at the Civic League meeting repeatedly, that they, and Jackson can, if he wants to come, say the same thing. The biggest concern, and I'm not going to diminish other concerns, was that this, they believe, the community believes that the city owes it to them to come to them, not just us. Now, I don't, I have no aversion to going to any Civic League, I've been doing it for 32 years, it's, it's trying to build consensus and explain things. But that is one thing that I heard as loud as anything that I heard, you know, was that they, they want the city to, to reach out to them when applications come. So, what you all are putting in place, I think, is precisely what the biggest, one of the biggest things I heard anyone say with the Civic League.
They've, they've made a commitment, that's going to happen.
Barbara.
Yeah, just addressing that, I mean, I think if it's a city issue, such as what I was talking about earlier with it being city property, then it is appropriate for the city to approach the community. But if it's a private rezoning, the city doesn't get involved in a promoting yes or no, that's up to the developers. So, I mean, we really have to kind of make these distinctions and not make promises we can't keep.
It's the city, the city needs to.
The city property.
Make sure that we, the people representing, go to the Civic League before they put it on the agenda, and that's, that's what I was.
But, for example, the property next to this is zone B-2, and that is what is there.
That's, that's been there, and that's where the animal shelter is located.
That's the animal shelter, and I believe when we did that, we, you know, that was a city project, and that's, that's kind of different, but. But we always with, with land use issues, have to look at what the surrounding property is, and we have to treat like properties in a like fashion. And we've got B-2 to the south, and I guess that property below that is industrial, right?
So, I mean, that, that is where the, the, that's where the old golf course was, that's all, that's where the.
That, I think, is within city property as well.
All of it's been conveyed.
And all of that, on the other side of it, is, is industrial. And then there's the one R-10, which is the existing. And then there's the one R-10, which is the existing halves, right?
There's, there's a house here, that, there's, and then there's a house back in this area in industrial zone.
But all of that is zoned industrial.
Yes, ma'am. And this, down here at the bottom, that's, that's been rezoned, that's, again, a part of the, and frankly, so is the property of here. This is all, the part of the property that was sold to GTS for the, you know, the battery facility, all of that was city property, that is, that R-2.5, that was rezoned as a part of that process.
So it's, and, you know, this is, this is what it is, it's industrial. But now, we did, we did very much involve the community when we were looking at the, and you have used the right term, and I'm not exactly sure what it is, the-
The battery facility?
No, 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 the Sea-Tac historic and-
Oh, oh, the suburban focus area, suburban focus area.
Suburban focus area.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, that did greatly involve all of the community in that long process, which is a part now of our comprehensive plan. And that was that this side of the road would be other uses in addition to what's there as residential. And so, but that's, that's really, I think, the critical thing, and the reason, I think, probably for that, is because of these ACUs restrictions. I mean, after all, it's in the high noise zone, and it's in the accident potential zone, and we don't want to put people in harm's way. So there are reasons for that. So this whole issue is very, very, very complicated, and, you know, sometimes we just have to be straightforward and tell folks the reality, and the reality is that there can't be a house built on this.
That's right. That, you couldn't be more accurate. The property in here, since the early eighties, that Navy took the development rights away, when the Kurtz's, when the parents bought this in nineteen sixty-one, I was wrong, it was fifty-eight years ago, this piece of property was owned for residential development. No residences on it, they never developed it residentially, and in eighty-two, when the Navy came in to protect NES Oceana, which is a vital part of our community as well. Fortunately, it's a four-lane divided highway, so it's, Bird Neck Road is, it's not, you know, where the real rub was previously, was down on Bell's Road, where you have residential around it. And the comp plan clearly calls for this type of development on this side of Bird Neck Road.
And they are all going to be one-story.
It's a one-story building.
Heavily landscaped.
It's heavily landscaped.
Including the part on Bird Neck Road, and I'm assuming the lighting is going to be low-level and-
There's low-level, there's no, no light towers or any, anything of the sort. It's all, you know, residential in scale. I'd also note, there's a park across the street, as well, there's not even, there aren't homes even across the street from it.
Well, the fact of the matter is, with all of these conditions, it's certainly conditioned pretty heavily, and it could be built, as Rosemary said, by right, with a lot more conflicting uses.
And I honestly believe there are a large number of members of the community that understand that now, and understand, and have, through this process, through our meeting with the community, I do believe there's a fairly widespread understanding that it, the perfect, perfect thing, nothing happens, and I think most people understand that that's not what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Aaron.
Can we allow Ms. Tammy Mullin, she's the chair of the Sea-Tac Civic League, to voice her concerns? I believe you have to give your name and everything.
Actually, I have it from my earlier card, yes, thank you, though.
So, thank you very much for that. I just want to say, yes, they did meet what I said at the Civic League meeting, and yes, we did ask certain questions about things that we didn't want there, such as storage and automotive use. But I do want to say that what's not on that map is the line that shows beautiful street, and that's adjacent to Bird Neck, and there are homes there. In fact, one of our oldest homes in Sea-Tac dated back to eighteen ten is on that street, as well as a cemetery that we want to make sure stays intact. So that's important to us in, in our community. And so, we're concerned about the traffic that's coming out of that area. That's another issue, because what hasn't happened is, the battery factory hasn't opened yet, okay? So they, they came to us, they came to our community as well, and told us, oh, we're going to do a hub zone, and we're going to offer jobs in Sea-Tac. And then I went to a meeting that they had, and guess what? They're not a hub zone, because they didn't apply for it. So now, they don't have to offer jobs to Sea-Tac. Oh, but people in Sea-Tac can apply for the jobs. But if they were a hub zone, they would have to hire a certain amount of people and train them for that job. So what we're saying is, I feel, I'm so sorry for this gentleman and his land, and the issues that are here, but it doesn't negate the fact that this is a constant thing that happens in Sea-Tac. This is nothing new, it's not the first time, and it keeps happening. And we're just tired.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Good evening, Mrs. Mayor.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor. I just like to let you know that I am a citizen of Virginia Beach. I am a resident of Sea-Tac community, and I am your constituent. And a lot of things have been said tonight. I actually live in Sea-Tac, 113 Burford Avenue, not far from that. And the concern that we have is that, how much, how many pieces do you have to take from this area before it no longer become a resident? This is considered as one of the oldest black African-American communities. It's considered as that. I remember this land was hewed out by my grandfather, it was hewed out by my great-uncles. Every street that's in this, in this area is named after individuals. Anything Councilwoman Henley, anything that we're passionate about, we protect it, whether it's land that we want anyone to build on, and we preserve it, anything. And I'm reminded of what, when I said to Council, I was with him not too long ago, and he said, it's easy to bypass someone when you don't know them, but you know us. We're your neighbors. And they said, love your neighbors as yourself. And my thing is, I just want to preserve the little bit of the resident that we have, to keep it as that. Most residents that come in, anything that come in there, it's built, or it either looks like what is in that neighborhood. I understand what you're saying about if we don't build something, something else is coming worse, take our medicine another way, but I want you to know that we love this area, we live in it. So how many more pieces do we have to sell off before we are no longer a community or a resident? I live in it, and a lot of people are speaking for it, and don't even live in the area. They don't. We do. And they can't speak for us. I'm about development, but I'm about community as well. And I just want to let you know that, that you have the battery plant there now, and I had some communication with that, they said it was going to be a hub zone. We found out it's not going to be a hub zone. Now, we have to pick and choose, they're going, they're able to pick and choose, so they want to pick and choose. I am your constituent. I just want you to hear my voice. We haven't had representation and a while. No one to come to talk and really have a conversation with us. And all we are saying to you is to reconsider this, that we live there, and we have to deal with the traffic, we have to deal with everything else that's coming. And we're just there, paying our taxes, doing our due diligence. We live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, you can. Just come up, give your name to the city clerk.
Sharon, no, you can just speak, you can just sit from there, it's fine, I'll report it. Thank you, sir.
My name is Donnie Gregory. I'm a proud resident of Virginia Beach, especially Sea-Tac. I've been several, I tried to live in several places, Florida, DC, and Maryland, and I always came back home to live in Virginia Beach, especially Sea-Tac. They said, when you came leave the beach, you must got sand in your shoes. But I found out that it's not the sand, it's the great history of Sea-Tac. And I'm here tonight to express myself as far as the ongoing development of a place like Mrs. Felton said, in a few more days, we won't even recognize that it is a place called Sea-Tac. Because of the different swatches of land that's, that come up and available, they're allowed to do these projects that we really don't have a voice in. You know, we just come and go through the procedure, but it always work against us. And my thing is that if, if, if the city, if the community is really for preserving Sea-Tac in the, in the place where you have allowed it to be worldly known, that it's the oldest African-American community in the country, sixteen hundred is where we get our start from, but nothing is being done to preserve it. I would, I would, you know, going forward, these different swatches that are, that come available, and even to some of their homes, that it's almost like genocide, you ask me, because the little houses that the folk are allowed to buy, a hundred thousand dollars, they turn around and put a six hundred thousand dollars on the property. Nobody, nobody that I know going to be able to come back to that community, especially the folk of color. And I don't know if that's by design, or what, you know? But it looked, it looked like, it looked like genocide, but these different swatches of land, let's put some affordable housing in there. I know y'all don't like hood and all of that, don't like federal money, but, you know, help people to be able to live. But I wouldn't be able to live in a six hundred thousand dollar house, I got a two hundred thousand dollar house, you know? And going forward, that's what I would like to see.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Aye.
Sir?
Yeah, Rosemary.
Sir?
Yeah, sir.
If you come up just for a second. Just to make sure I have your name.
So, Donnie Graham, you are- We're really in a tough, tough spot. And, I mean, I looked at the Sea-Tac community, so we can, we can deny this, and then things can be built that could be worse, or we could approve it, and the restrictions will be in place, so it'll be one-story, lots of landscaping, a nicer building, otherwise, the things that Mr. Vodan said, automotive could go in there, the three-story buildings. So I'm, I'm really struggling. I mean, I'm listening to you, and I really want to do the right thing, you know? However, what is the right thing? Is the right thing to put the restrictions in place so they can't build certain things, or deny it, and then they'll go in and build things that you're going to want even less? So that's my question.
Okay, next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chastain Bangum, and I own two pieces of property in Sea-Tac. And my concern is the traffic. I have a piece of property on Bird Neck roadside, and I have a piece of property on the Sea-Tac side. We already have three storages in Sea-Tac. The traffic is humongous coming out of there. I don't think that everybody is getting it. I understand, he said he can put some trees up and some lighting, that is not the point. We just do not want any more storage bins in our neighborhood. We want to be able to come out of our, our property anytime we feel like it, and not be hurtled with all sorts of traffic coming down Bird Neck Road. In the summertime, you're not even going to be able to move. You have the battery shop coming up, you got a storage further up by, by Virginia Beach Boulevard, and you have another storage, and this will be the fourth storage in our community.
This isn't a storage.
We have one at the first part.
This isn't storage.
This isn't a storage.
This, whatever he's trying to, this little thing he's trying to put up here. Well, anyway, it's complicated. We don't want it in our neighborhood, and I don't think any of you guys want it in your neighborhood. So what I'm saying is, don't try to stuff that down our throat, we don't want it. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry that you have this lot, and there's not a whole lot you could put on it, but let's be fair to Sea-Tac. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have any speakers signed up, so-
Okay, not a problem. Did you get all the information you need?
She got it.
I'll, Ms. Ben, can you come up for just a second, just so I can get your information?
Okay, yes.
Sorry. Tell me your name. Give me my address.
To all our councilwomen and men. My name is Cheryl Snowden. My family still owns property on Jackson Street. At one point, we wanted to build a home on Jackson Street, but because of APZ One, we were told we could not build homes. So we have land that we cannot live on. We can farm it, we could also, too, we looked at the compatibility list that I'm still trying to find. Can somebody please find that compatibility list that can be published? Again, it was on the website, probably back in, maybe four years ago or so, that's the last time I really seen it. But there is a compatibility list. It does not say that the area has to be rezoned, it just says what can be built on it. I don't know if the gentleman's businesses, or what he wants to do, fall in that compatibility list. But my, also, too, my concern was, the other thing that they told us was, you see where that water is? It's the Chesapeake watershed. My concern is, what is the industrialization, what is the impact that it's going to continue to have on the Sea-Tac community? Right now, we have the other little small industrial thing where they do all the auto. Of course, we know, there may be a regulation to say, don't pour oil there, but that water runs the whole west side from the Lincoln Bay, as you all know, Virginia Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Park, all the way down to where the golf course is. But nobody said anything about the protection of the water yet. What is the effect of industrialization going to have on Sea-Tac and its water, according to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act? The other thing, and I'm going to hurry up here, a couple of years ago, I signed a contract with the Historical Preservation Commission to do a report on Sea-Tac. Mr. Woods, I believe you're the vice president of that? Is that correct?
No.
You're not?
No.
Oh, they got you posted on the website.
That's my-
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta hurry up and get that stuff updated, but anyway. That's what it says. Okay, that report, that, that research paper went to the Historical Preservation Commission. I did find a letter that said that I needed to make some typographical, I'm not saying that word right, typographical corrections. But what I'm asking you all today is, is that you would, my petition is to request that the planning department, the Historical Preservation Commission, release that research paper. Right now, it's on the website, you cannot pull it up because it says pending. It talks about some of the overview things of Sea-Tac historical attributes, so that the world will continue to know what some of our history is. And it is a Project Sea-Tac Part One, Project Sea-Tac Part Two will be coming soon.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, thank you. Tell me your name.
Okay, at this point, are we ready for the vote?
By a vote of four to three, you have approved the application.
Thank you all very much. Okay, okay, at this point, we go to appointments.
Mr. Mayor, nominate the following individuals to boards and commissions, to the Audit Committee, Sharon Brown, and Councilmember Louis Jones, to the Bayfront Advisory Board, Phil Davenport, to the Community Policy and Management Team, Nancy Bloom, and Amanda Caton, to the Deferred Compensation Board, Mary Grassley, to the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Mayor Bob Dyer, to the Historic Preservation Commission, Patrick Kane, to Minority Business Council, Kelvin Arthur, Harshad Barat, Ed Hopper, and Olga Torres, to the Open Space Advisory Committee, Maury Hill, Harold Millet, Thomas Johnson, Joseph Walton, to the Public Library Board, Chris Hutchison.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, you have appointed those named by Vice Mayor Woods.
Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business? Okay, thank you all for your participation, we stand adjourned.
Aaron, sorry about that.